Please join me in standing and facing the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with this world with liberty and justice for all. This is the point in our meeting where we invite public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to the board? If so, I have a few guidelines that I would like to share. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Could I have a motion for the approval of the minutes for the December 12, 2018 meeting?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Lukas, would you please take the role?
Mr. Kanzinger?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
At this time, we'll share board committee updates. As I mentioned, each of the board committees, if you have met since our last meeting or you have a date, please share that with the board. Otherwise, just say no report. For the Audit Committee, Mary-Kay O'Toole is our chair.
No report.
The Board Policy Committee, standing in for Sharon Brose. She gave me an update to share. The Board Policy Committee met on January 16 at 7:30 a.m. in this room. Board members O'Toole, Brose, and Garvey were present, along with Candy Lukas, Lisa Shannon, Bob Hunt, Pamela, Leah Dustin, and Janelle Rineri. In response to concerns brought forth by parents and a request that the board consider adopting the PE waiver, Pamela walked us through a presentation of the current PE program and the benefits that it affords our students. And as a fitness advocate and educator, Leah Dustin also shared her passion for providing students a program that fosters making healthy choices. To better understand the benefits and impact of adopting the waiver, follow-up information was brought back and will be brought back at the next committee meeting. Additionally, the committee continued to work through the details of proposed policy changes to permit alcohol in designated locations at designated days and times to support community use of some of our district facilities. Much of the conversation vetted the scope and legalities of what the district will permit and require. We hope to make a draft policy available for review by the board in early March. The next meeting for the Board Policy Committee is scheduled for March 17 at 1 p.m. The Business Advisory Committee.
Nobody needs this one.
And the Capital Planning Committee, we have an upcoming meeting on February 13 at 6:30 p.m. in this room. And records retention has not been since we last. Could I have a motion for the approval of the treasure search agreement with K-12 Consulting under board recommendations? Moved by Greg Kanzinger. Seconded by Mary-Kay O'Toole. Any discussion? So everybody had a chance to review that ahead of time. Ms. Lukas, would you please take the role?
Mr. Kanzinger?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Recker?
Yes.
At this point, I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Hunt for the superintendent's reports.
Good evening. Thank you. Not on my report, but just bringing everyone's attention. We have been moving a video recorder around the last couple of meetings, and I think we've probably found them all. So as long as this comes out well, just to bring your attention, we'll be videotaped, and we will post these meetings on the board page for you. So just to bring everyone's attention. Sure. So many of you may not know, but January is School Board Recognition Month. It's sponsored by the House School Boards Association. I want to read just a statement that they came out with. Citizens who serve children and represent their communities, individual school board members face complex and demanding challenges, yet few people fully understand the scope and far-reaching implications of board members' responsibilities. All high-owners should recognize the vital contribution of these men and women and focus attention on the crucial role the elected public officials play in the education of our children. You make a difference for students every day. This job entails an endless string of meetings and school functions to attend, rooms of reports, agendas, proposals, and other information to read and study, and a host of difficult decisions to make. While you wear many hats, school board members put on a collective hat and may get down to the business of leading the school district. Board members pull together as a team toward a common goal, helping students achieve. Board members contribute hundreds and hundreds of hours each year while helping to improve student achievement. The time spent in board meetings represents just a small fraction of the hours school board members devote to the year. So I certainly am in a network of superintendents and work with a lot of administrators and hear horror stories along the way of different school boards. And I would tell you that I'm very appreciative as a superintendent of schools to know that the board is focused on students and student achievement. And I just want to commend and thank you for stepping forward and representing the community of Chagrin Falls. Probably the most exciting night is the night you were elected, and then it's all worked from there. And thank yous are few and far between. So on behalf of the 200 employees in our school district and the community, I want to recognize and thank you tonight. We also did provide you a gift, again, the one-time-a-year giveaway and recognition. So feel free to open that up.
I see something useful right off the bat.
So that was after the last meeting.
We're nice.
A couple of emotions. Think you're here a long way. Good job.
Goodness. Why are we here?
Yeah, that's a nail. That's a good question.
Is this for others or for us?
Yeah, for our kids. Kids don't think it's funny, so. Tell your dad. There's a big need to let us know when we have the fun break.
Thank you.
So I do want to give a picture of the full board so maybe we can break for exact sections. Can I go do that?
Okay.
Chair here as well.
I will. I have a feeling it'll put us to good use.
That's great.
You might have to redact the picture.
I can do that. Just the hair.
That's what they name a trench.
Thank you very much. All right. I'm going to go ahead and move on to item B on the agenda, which is the board harassment and tuition report. As you know, two times a year, we are required by law to provide board education update for cases of board harassment. Please note that these are confirmed cases, and we also have the opportunity to post this on the district website, which will be posted after this meeting. I don't see, I'll pause. I don't see on the agenda, we did have Ryan Smith here from TDA. Ryan, we appreciate you coming back. We did introduce the kind of concept about the 712 traffic in tennis court decision last meeting. I did, you know, give this a question and provide some information of last week's board report on parking. Maybe Ryan, if you may jump up and just walk us through this real quick.
Yeah.
The board's gone through it once. As you know, we are kind of at the decision point on this, especially if we want to install tennis courts next, or this year, this summer. So wanted to bring Ryan here if you have any questions or comments, any additional recommendations, anything to discuss. Did you want me to go? No, I'll just stick strictly to that.
Okay. Could you skip a couple slides? Go on. Go on. One more, sorry. All right. Okay.
Ryan with TDA. Hi, everybody. So the task we're asked to do, obviously, is a comprehensive master plan for parts of the district, including the high school, middle school, Burney Elementary, the brand-new intermediate school, so we're not really delving into that too much. But one of the big things that came out of the discussions we had, the charrettes we had with the school visiting sessions, was about traffic issues and kind of site circulation. It's presently a bit of a problem on the high school and middle school campus. There's more issue out here on Washington that is really pretty difficult to deal with. What you have essentially is just a two-lane road. You have secondary roads that's over here at this location, and you do get a bit of a bottleneck. We looked into the possibilities of widening the road, of creating secondary turn lanes into the site, of potentially accessing off of some of these other areas. And the potentials of all of those are pretty bleak in the sense that there is very substantial cost associated with any of those sorts of solutions. Especially in Washington here, there are power lines and things like that up and down the road, so it's very difficult to make many changes out there. So the thing that we focused on next was, if you're getting onto the site, what is slowing down traffic? What's creating the problems on site? We do a lot of tools in our firm. We do a lot of site reconfigurations. We're brought in a lot of times after a school's been built and they're having problems. We have an in-house engineering staff that does a lot of that work. And the thing that we see all the time is the biggest conflicts are where you have buses and cars crossing paths. That happens all the time, or where you have migration of people across traffic, whether it be buses passing or bus traffic passing. So the thing that we were looking at is you have a pretty healthy amount of students on site that are driving. You have parents, obviously, doing drop-off, and then you have buses to contend with, and obviously, some. So the first thing we were looking at doing is taking one of the elements out of the equation, and that is the student driver. As they're coming onto the site, the idea was to separate them off right away into essentially the parking lots that fall across the northern part of the site. You have these two existing parking lots that presently service the athletics area. You have a portion of the parking lot that is out front of the high school that also has some visitor spaces. And then you have this parking lot that is right there that presently has the Learning Village on it that will be removed, and the proposal is to keep a couple of tennis courts there presently. So the idea would be this amount of parking would be substantial enough to accommodate your student volume that has parking passes on site. So as students pull on, they're making right-hand turns into each of these lanes, so they're not cutting off traffic, trying to turn left across traffic. And they're pulling into these spaces and getting out of the primary traffic flow. So they're the only students going down, or the only people going down this direction. The next people we have to deal with are the buses. The buses presently line up over here across from middle school. There's a middle school parking lot. This is the lanes for the buses. That wouldn't change. The idea is bring them along around the back of the facility, park them in this location. They're not fighting with the students that are trying to get into their spaces. They're coming down, simply down to this location. They're lining up, and then the students from the buses could enter the buildings at that point there. Then when they leave, they'd be pulling out and not fighting with any traffic going that direction, because all of these students would be turning into these parking lots, into their assigned parking lots, and there shouldn't be any crosswalk. The last group of people are, obviously, parents that are dropping off. The idea is to have them follow the same path as the buses and line up along this edge of the site. The reason for that is presently, people drop off along this front edge, along this side edge, kind of off in this parking lot, maybe across the back, wherever they can get to a spot to drop off the children. So the idea was to locate a long section of sidewalk somewhere on campus that is on the right-hand side of the car. Generally, don't want to be dropping off students and having them get out on the traffic side of the car. So what we found was the longest substantial piece of real estate that has that potential is right. The benefit of this is, is this section of sidewalk here has direct access to the high school portion and access to the middle school portion. So there's a lot of curb lane there where the students can drop off. So the parents would come, they'd do the drop-off here. To get an automobile turn radius, you need about 40 feet, which is a parking space and a drive width. So we could essentially stripe off a section of some of this asphalt that's over here and create a circle that would then get the parents back out this way, so the parents aren't fighting with bus traffic. Parents aren't going back against any of the student drivers that are coming in. They're coming to this three-way stop, and then they're turning and leaving the side. So you never have an instance where the parents are trying to turn across traffic and create any sort of hesitation or anything of that nature. So that is the kind of gist of the site plan.
Did you say a three-way stop there?
Yeah. Presently, that's what you have. You have essentially an open flowing stop at this point. A stop sign at these points might be a better choice. We're working through a lot of the signage kind of options for this. Like, for example, designating these lots by color, let's say, like a red lot, an orange lot, those sorts of things would make it very obvious that if a student has a red sticker, they go to the red lot. If there's not space in the red lot, somebody's in the wrong spot. So you go there, and you know you have a spot there. Likewise, stop signs at this location, some back row signs. So again, nobody, you know, going this direction past a certain point in time, those sorts of signs would be needed, obviously. The idea here was, we don't think you need a bunch of additional asphalt. We think you just need redirection of some of your flow to help alleviate some of these problems, because realistically, this double turnout is a nice thing to have. You have two lanes there that can fill out. But the problem is, is that one of them is presently used by people parking there all the time, and that creates basically a bottleneck along that edge of the road, too, and kind of in unstable condition.
So maybe the only thing different since our last meeting, we discussed, if you are on the line of parking that kind of runs along a rear baseball field, we talked about striking those spots different color, maybe blue, and actually creating kind of a three-way, three lanes there, because you have people parking, pulling up to the side to drop off other people who want to go through, and the buses going out. So that is something, from a striking standpoint, lose that parking, but we have signage there that during the school day, where they use those spaces. Or that's probably the only additional item since our last meeting.
And we got validation on that parking counts were pulled again, and the amount of student drivers was pulled. And without needing these spaces here, without having spaces spread throughout the campus, with obviously removing the intermediate school population.
Is there room where that three-way stop is eventually expanded around?
You could potentially do that. The hurdle we have over here, and it's something that I notice every time I come in, is that helps. That's not insurmountable. I mean, that's something that you could tailor back. It is something that, obviously, somebody did, should have made that decision at one point because of music room that was compared to me. It's somebody. But this curve is probably my least favorite part of this whole proposal. This spot and right down here, I think you need to do a little bit of lighting. If you could, if you could pull this hill back a little bit to get a little bit better lighting, so there'd be nice. Roundabouts are nice if you can make that work. That would alleviate the need to have a stop sign.
Can you talk us a little about, like, I know you were a little scared, you needed to go back to the old life, right? Do you want to do it? Put this in, but then you wanted this supposed to track, pull back, what, or putting in an extra lane?
Yeah, I think the beauty of this is, if this doesn't work out well, we have everything in place to go right back to the old life. So again, I think, you know, the recommendation is rather than pressure a decision about where the tennis court should go, this spises the order of time. We did confirm that we could engage another year with our program agreements for our tennis team, and then we let the master plan and kind of work its way through this spring with the recommendation to come back to the board with a thought in mind.
There's just a minor detail with regard to the rack. They'll need to have access for trucks to get back to the rack. I would think sometimes during school year, but like toward the end of the school year, where you're parking a floor and things, just as you're thinking about where the parking spaces go, there's a driveway along those tennis courts.
And we weren't proposing removing any of this.
Oh, is that why I'm still staying there? Oh, okay.
You're basically, no, yeah, you're basically just pulling back to that current edge, so we don't have to interfere with that at all.
Okay.
That's, I mean, to the top point, this, the beauty of this, in my opinion, is that this is purely stripping and purely processing.
Right. It gives us a chance to test it.
Yeah, to test it. You rarely get that chance in life, so it's pretty nice.
I like it. I mean, having lived with it, with kids, and dropped off middle school kids all the time, other than the parking lot, you run across traffic, and you do one at a time. I like this. This has a lot of merit. I really like, great idea, the roundabout. I mean, I think that could, that could just keep foot going. I really like roundabout. But I like it, I like the foot all the way.
And that's one thing, too, that you can kind of dip your toe in the water with this process. If this is working well, that's when you look and say, is it time to, you know, bite the bullet and put in something a little bit more substantial for, you know, some of these turnaround areas and things of that nature? That's when you do start making some of these more substantial improvements to some of the roads and things of that nature.
Don't play the role of a little bit much, should you wait?
No.
No.
No, I feel like this portion of the traffic will flow really well, and as you get the students kind of peel into these spaces, you're taking off a lot of the people that were coming back here previously to get to this portion of the sunny, that are driving as students were trying to cross, and you're eliminating a lot of those by pulling those people down here, which should help alleviate all that. Likewise, the student is coming onto the site, and they're searching for a spot all the time. They're running that risk of driving all over creation, trying to find something, as opposed to just knowing that they have a lot to go to. It just should really expedite the process.
Are they going to turn around now and actually go into that 110 parking space area?
This isn't fully vetted out, but the idea is, there's plenty of asphalt back here somewhere that we could carve out a space for that turnaround gap. And that's something that, it wouldn't have to be permanent. As Bob mentioned, these spaces along here, during a big event, and the middle school would want to make use of those, or during something in the pack, and want to make use of those spaces. So these could be something where you section it off with some cones or something in the morning. There will be, still have to be some human element to this that, you know, holds the traffic. Well, that's, it's just a nature of the school and business.
Well, the other thing you've done is you've combined the middle school and high school drop-off area. So if a parent had one of each, right now, they're dropping off at high school, and then they're going around to middle school.
And to Frank's point, I talked about actually going into middle school during the hour. Look, if you physically drop back there, you'll see plenty of area and good asphalt.
I guess my question was testing whether we have enough parking, because that 110 spaces near the middle school would essentially be gone if the tennis courts were to get moved there. So we need to do some audits of, you know, parking periodically during the year, just to make sure.
See, a parent comes for a meeting during the day in the high school. I can see, it's easy to enter the middle school management. Where would they enter the high school?
They would still enter over here. So there would still be a section of this that would be reserved for visitors. So, for example, if we have this lot, and say it's that orange lot, and you have spaces over here that are designated the back row and the first 10 on the one side, just to get the count of them, those spaces are student spaces. The remaining spaces, 10, 15 spaces that are over there, would be visitors. Likewise, you'd have spaces here, and then, you know, this, there are some spaces that are going to be left over here, and some over here as well. So if we tried to put all of your staff in this lot, kind of this back area, this would be completely empty. But the reality is that you'd probably split up staff into those two lots, and that will still keep a couple of spaces in some of these other areas.
Ryan, would you mind speaking to, to that with my press friend, collaboration on how the budget could be delivered?
Yeah, as far as them putting in the work, you're saying?
Yeah. Have you had some feedback or follow-up?
Yeah, I mean, essentially, they, they were, they were planning on doing some sports and doing some of the paving work. They have an engineer on staff that does a lot of that work, and he was doing an assessment of the paving that was out there and kind of the implications that go along with removing the existing minutes. So they were putting together essentially their specs and drawings for this portion of the work. We're not trying to get any of that work from them, so if they're willing to do it, they have the capacity to do it. You have them lined up to do that, so it seems to make a lot of sense. And they've been very willing and accommodating to talk through the process and find the best way to do it. So at present, he was going through the steps of really kind of revising this thought process and making sure that it works. To his credit, he said he wants to make sure you guys are happy, and so if this little bit of a detour gets you guys to be happy with the end result, that he was more than happy to do it.
Any other questions? You do have some entryway design or thoughts on, just out of, I mean, for time tonight, it's been a lot ahead. I would say, if you look at that, you'll probably see some of that coming back through. So the master planning, capital planning committee have actually reported education development. Work is certainly progressing.
Can I just add a quick note? We are having ongoing meetings with staff to talk through some of those issues. What you're seeing there is no longer the current version. We had meetings as of Tuesday again, and very positive, exciting feedback, a lot of really interesting ideas, progressive ideas. I go into too many communities where there is not a desire to think outside the box and kind of push the envelope and push for something bigger and better and more exciting. So good conversations, so.
Ryan, thank you for all your work on this.
No problem. Thank you. Thanks.
All right. This time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Ms. Lukas for the treasure search reports.
Thank you. You previously received the December month-end financial report. And two pieces I want to address tonight, but first, I want to talk about just some of the highlights of the report for the end of December. I completed the sixth month of the fiscal year. This month's receipts included open enrollment, full-day kindergarten tuition, preschool tuition, and interest earnings credited to the general fund. In addition, the board approved transfers were credited to the debt service fund and permanent improvement fund in the amounts of $157,633 and $820,500, respectively. And also, the federal grant reimbursements were received for titles 6B, Title II-A, and Title IV. For expenditures in December, the salary expenditures for the month of December included overtime for custodial maintenance and transportation mechanic totaling $14,399.35. Substitute teacher costs totaled $19,989 for the month, and supplemental contract payments totaled $7,254 for the month. The financial report by fund, just to highlight that the total general fund receipts were $285,255, and expenditures totaled $3,270,831. But that total also included the $78,134 in transfers to other funds. Total revenues for all funds was $1,551,714, and expenditures for all funds totaled $3,558,682. The capital improvement fund balance at the end of the month is $20,490,719. The lunchroom fund had a month-end balance of $364,926. Excel Tech in Fund 14, the cash balance is positive, but the fund balance is negative this month due encumbrances. Positive balances are recorded in all athletic and student activity funds and Funds 200 and 300, and your federal program reimbursement score received for the month of November in December. The second part of the report that I wanted to deliver tonight revolves around the facilities project. And we've had some discussions about the format for a report, and what you saw was a first draft of a status report included in your report, where you typically have more of a transaction report. This month, I attached a summary report that shows both the soft cost categories and your total Gilbain GMP number four.
If I could interrupt you. Run page nine. I can see some board members trying to find the right page.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that correct? Page nine.
Page nine. I'm sorry. I don't have it electronically.
That's right.
But if you're looking at that report, you see those cost categories listed in a total project budget right now, $33,206,678. The purchase order amounts are slightly less than that, at $31,995. So you'll see that's about 96% of your total project budget. Your expenditures are $11,612,229, so you're about a third of the way spent through your budget. I also give you the remaining encumbrance amounts on your purchase orders, and then your remaining balance in each of those cost categories. This is just a quick summary status update, I think, that was helpful, and it was helpful for me to gauge where we are in the project. for me to gauge where we are in the project. But, we have had conversations about developing a report that's more of a planning tool for you, and I think that's the direction that we're moving in. So, as we continue to work on this report and evolve, you'll see something that is more of a planning tool to help you gauge where you are, what's remaining, and have a tool for decisions, future actions. Okay?
Just one question. If I read this right, we would be considered out of owner contingency right now, because our total project remaining is greater than the owner contingency. If I have a chance to.
Over your owner contingency, the $1.6 million is budgeted?
No, I think that's, so like, not 1.6 million is the total project for owner's contingency, right? And then, how much have we committed for the, we've issued POs for 441, right? So, there's 1.2 theoretically remaining.
Correct.
So, it's a good guy.
Right. There's no statement meaning that, too?
Uh, that's a sum to evolve.
Okay.
So, the tool Kenny's working on, if he would give us that number out of Lance, all the expenditures that have been committed, so maybe contracts that we've entered into or change orders that we've approved, which is a little different way than in accounting way of looking at it, so it's not just expenses that we've actually got on books, it's expenses that we know we've been actually committed to. So, we'll be able to look at a box and see exactly where we're at, as far as, so we're under, you know, I think it's hard to infer from this where we're at, which is why you're continuing to work on.
Yeah, this report is showing you what's in our financial system right now. So, it's showing you purchase order amounts that have been entered against each of these cost categories, and then what's actually been paid. So, expenditures are what we've actually paid. The encumbered amount remaining on those purchase orders is available to be paid, and so is the remaining balance in each of those cost categories.
I mean, the, I think the PO gives a pretty good idea of where we're at, I guess the only thing would be like project costs and the project team knows about for which we have not yet issued a PO. That's what you're talking about, right? It's a more predictive tool.
Right, and some of the POs are slightly larger than the contract amount, so we're going to kind of clean that up as well, because we are down to the penny, where we're at. And then, the other thing is the revenues for the project, you know, we have a community as well, the bond proceeds and the grant proceeds.
Right, the original bond proceeds were the $31,500,000. In addition to that, you were awarded an OFCC grant of $600,000, and recently, the playground grant with an additional $20,000. As the project progresses, you're earning interest on your bond proceeds, they're being directed back into the construction fund, so back into fund board, and in that fund, with the interest that I've seen, the pattern, you are, obviously, we are less interested as you've spent the money, but the interest rates are going up, so the last couple of months, it's spending a little bit of flux, so you've actually earned a little bit more interest than it's worth. So, those are your revenue streams that are going in there right now. Okay? Very helpful.
That helps a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Could I have a motion for consent agenda items 9A through 9Q?
Sure.
Second. Second. Second, if I can. Any discussion? Mr. Reichen, do you want to walk us through any of these?
Most of these are just standard approvals, just mentioned, that's been approved of the revolving position in middle school, so it's not an official status.
Thank you. Ms. Lukas, would you please call the board?
Mr. Reichen?
Yes.
Mr. Kensington?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm scrolling down here. Okay. Could I have a motion for superintendent's recommendations, 10A and 10B? So moved? Second?
Second.
Mr. Howard, would you like to speak to these?
Sure. 10B is the replacement of Carol Ward, two, as Chris Walters' administrative assistant recommendation to approve DOR for that administrative assistant additional resumes attached there, so you can do that. 10B is enough pay medical leave for a pay medical grant to the Schreiber Foundation.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Lukas, would you please take the call?
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mr. Reichen?
Yes.
Mr. Kensington?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Could I please have a motion for treasurer's recommendations, 11A through 11C?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
No seconded? Any discussion? Ms. Lukas, do you want to call anything else?
Um, you have, in addition to the December financial reports, the then-announced events, and some donations for the stretch.
Wonderful. And on behalf of the board, you'll be thanking our donors?
Yes.
For these donations, thank you. Okay, Ms. Lukas, would you please call the board?
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mr. Reichen?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Kensington?
Yes.
Okay, other business? Does anyone have any other business that I could introduce? I have one item on next month's agenda, would like for us to have a discussion about taking the current treasurer's finance committee and transitioning it to a board finance committee, especially during this time of having an interim treasurer, I think there might be some value in that. So, we'll add it to the agenda, but I wanted to give heads up, so there's some time for people to think about that before we talk about that in the next meeting. Any other? Okay, so, our next meeting is going to be on Wednesday, February 6th, at 6:00 PM in the Sands Community Room. May I have a motion for executive session?
So moved?
Thank you.
You asked the easier question. In accordance with Ohio revised Code 121,22, the Schreiber Department of Education will go into executive session with the sole purpose of the consideration of following matters, employment, and compensation of a public employee are official.
Second. Ms. Lukas, would you please take the call?
Mr. Reichen?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mr. Kensington?
Yes.
We don't expect any action after our executive session.